I'm going to call to order the regular council meeting of the independent city council for February 20th, 2023. We'll start with the invocation by Lupe Mo of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we are so grateful to thee for all that we have. We have been truly blessed with so many things and that we may be mindful of what we have. We're also grateful for winning the game last week. It has brought happiness and unity to our community, and we ask thee that it will also carry on. We ask thee to bless our leaders here in the city, that they will be mindful of those that are speaking today and that their concerns will be heard. We ask thee thy spirit be upon this meeting, that we'll remember those who are in need. Please bless those that are sick and afflicted, those that are homeless. Please bless our children, that we'll have a better way of life for them, and that everybody will use their discernment to do what is right. These favors and blessings we ask thee for, in the name of thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
... to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
McCandless.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
We have a few citizens that have signed up to speak, a few residents. First up is Ms. Lucy Young. She signed up to speak on 23-714, which is the city manager's and the council's action plan. Thank you. You have a time limit of five minutes, Ms. Young, and you can start when you're ready.
Well, I thought that I'd spoken on this before, so I'll only take three. How's that?
Oh.
Good bargain.
Thank you.
It's a little upsetting that you guys are voting on this tonight, because the city charter review commission is meeting tomorrow night to discuss Article III, which is about IPL. So to me, this is an endorsement to look at possible sale of IPL, and I think it's very premature. Number 3.2D talks about maintaining the shelter as a no-kill animal shelter, which is my heart and soul, as you well know. But the problem is that you've gone into the grass and the weeds with the union contracts and the this and the that. And 5.1G says, "Research, evaluate, and determine the future ownership, governance, and operation of Independence Power and Light." But with the animal shelter, you don't discuss the possibility of what you're going to do with the breed-specific legislation. When I looked at the petition, I finally got to see a copy of it, and it specifically says to send it out to the voters of Independence. This is something I would appreciate you considering, and as you're planning on putting the charter on the ballot in April of 2024, there's plenty of room for another ballot that says, "Do you wish Independence to continue having BSL or removing BSL?" That takes it off your shoulders, that does not ignore the 4,400 signatures of registered voters, and treats everybody with equity. I think that 105 strategies for you is too much. I'm glad that you don't agree with me, but I think when it comes time for your elections, people are going to be looking for accountability. I highly recommend, as I have spoken to a council member, that you split this back to council goals and plaudibly Mr. Walker's action plan.
You have one minute.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Young. Next up, we have Roxanne Robinson, who would like to speak on rezoning, a hearing that's set for tonight, I believe.
I don't think it's set for tonight.
Is that not right?
No.
My apologies. Please, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Roxanne Robinson, and I live at 131 East Farmer here in Independence, and I've been there for 50 years. On February the 14th, they had sent us, well, they had sent us out letters about this meeting for rezoning. So from 120 East Farmer up to Main Street, they changed the zoning. It was R30-C2, and they changed that to R6. But behind, they addressed 120 East Farmer down to Nolan Road on the corner. That part belongs to the community service lead, but it's a lot of vacant buildings, a lot of vacant lots in there, that we don't know who the owners are, and they didn't change that zoning. Or across the street, which is three houses, mine included, and they didn't change our zoning all the way up. So how can you take one block and change it, half being R6, another half being still R30? We don't know who these new people are that bought that property just about seven months ago, if they're trying to put in apartments or multiple family units, or I don't know what's going on. And then we also, on that street, we have some Black History places there. Douglas, the first Black school was there. The school, of course, is not there, but the wall is still there. And then, of course, Harman Young took over and made the, you know, second Black school for the blocks. And then my home, where I live, is on the, I'm on the zone. I live in Ms. Vieta Garret's house, and she was the cook for the President Truman at the White House and on Truman Road as well. So I'm just here tonight. I'm not against having, you know, to make things better in our neighborhood, but I'm just saying that the zoning should be all the same. The planning commission, they're going to meet on April the 5th, and so they can decide what they're going to do with that property there. But we need to know who those people that owns that property, what they planning on doing, and the zoning should be all the same on that street, R6. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. Next up is Mr. Scott O'Brien, who'd like to speak on Bill number 23-008. That's rezoning from R6 to R12. Go ahead, whenever you'd like to begin, Mr. O'Brien.
Scott O'Brien, 1505 West College Terrace. As you said, I'm speaking on Bill number 23-008, the rezoning of a single-family residential to two-family residential at 701 North Forest Avenue, which will be subdivided into two lots with two duplexes. I am not in favor of this rezoning. Staff recommended against this. This is not keeping with both the Historic Preservation Master Plan and the Midtown Truman Road 353 Tax Abatement Program. What is the purpose of having these programs if we're not going to follow the recommendations? While property values are important to me, the most important thing is that single-family homeownership is better for the neighborhood. For instance, this block recently had several homes rehabbed and sold to families, including one that was a revolving door rental, now has a single-family owner living, which is good for the neighborhood. I am concerned about the parking on College Terrace. With four units on a single property, it is reasonable to expect that we'll need at least eight parking spots. Also of concern is the intersection visibility looking north on Forest from College Terrace if the property is subdivided with two duplexes. I believe the neighborhood is improving, and I want that to continue. Please continue to correct these zoning issues in our city, and in this case, please let's not make it worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Brien. Next up is Mr. Frank Smith. He has signed up to speak on rezoning of property at Forest and College. You'll have five minutes, Mr. Smith, and we'll start when you're ready.
Thank you. I'm Frank Smith, 1403 West College Street. That's right where College Terrace takes off of College Street. Okay. And I'm opposed to this rezoning that my neighbor here just spoke at length on, so I won't say a lot, other than that it's eroding our neighborhood and we're trying to make it better. I know that my property is zoned R12. I would change it to R6 if I could. I don't know how to do that, but most of us feel the same way along in that neighborhood. Please do not allow this rezoning to happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Are there any other residents that would like to speak to the council tonight on these or any other matters? Seeing no one, we will move on to proclamations. Madam City Clerk, we have a George Washington birthday proclamation, if you would, please.
Whereas the H.R. Truman Chapter of the Missouri Society of the American Revolution recognizes George Washington's birthday, and whereas February 22nd is celebrated in honor of George Washington. Whereas George Washington, by his example, clearly defined what it means to be an American and through his action exemplified the meaning of words, ideals, devotion, and love of country. And whereas George Washington was instrumental in the formation of our new government and presided over the Constitutional Convention in 1787. And whereas George Washington lived, excuse me, by his written rules of civility and set the moral tone of our new nation, his honesty, integrity, and loyalty made him the most beloved and respected man in America. And whereas George Washington was elected the first President of the United States through his strength and wisdom, guided, and he guided our fragile new government through the first eight years of its infancy. And whereas George Washington died December 14th, 1799, and upon his death, President Adams stated, "His example is now complete, and it will teach wisdom and virtue to magistrates, citizens, and men, not only in the present age but future generations, as long as our history shall be read." Now therefore, Rory R. Rowland, Mayor of the City of Independence, by the virtue vested in him, hereby proclaims February 22nd, 2023, to be George Washington's birthday.
Oh, sir. There it says true, Secretary, of this reserve.
There we go. Thank you very much. We love seeing you here every time.
We try to keep this spirit alive, nowhere different and where we're going.
We sure appreciate it very much. Thank you, fellas.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Councilmember Perkins.
I move that we approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, there's been a motion and a second. Are there any items any council members would like pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Councilmember.
Can we pull Resolution 23-720?
720? You can.
And Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, can we pull 23-716?
Any other items for any other council members? Okay. Madam City Clerk, barring those two items, please take the role.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes. The consent agenda passes. Councilmember McCandless, item 23-720.
I would like to amend Resolution 23-720 to read, "A resolution appointing Terry Steele to the Charter Review Commission," and the amendment would be to add less Boatwright to the Charter Review Commission as well.
Second. There's been a motion to amend 23-720 to add less Boatwright, and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes. And do we need a motion to...
Approve.
Approve. Councilmember McCandless, would you like to make a motion to?
Please make a motion, appointing Terry Steele and less Boatwright to the Charter Review Commission.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the resolution appointing both members to the Charter Review Commission. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
I, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure there was a clarification why this is being done. We received an email earlier from our city clerk letting us know that Mr. Boatwright was going to be the one that had won the ranked choice voting, and that that's the reason for the amendment to be done.
He stole my thunder, so it's okay. Do you have the same question, Councilmember?
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood why the change was being made, so.
We obviously did not.
Okay. So prior to tonight, the first rank, my understanding is, prior to tonight, that Terry Steele had won the first round of ranked choice voting, and that the second round had just been decided today, and less Boatwright had won the second round in ranked choice voting. Is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
That is correct.
Okay. And so to just formally close that voting and add less Boatwright along with Terry Steele to the Charter Review Commission, that's why this amendment has been done?
That is correct.
And then the second vote will be to formally close the issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just add one thing to that?
Please do.
So this last vote was from a pool of names that had been, they were all previous nominations, right, that we had all had made. So it was a pool of about, how many was, just roughly, eight, 10?
The pool from this round was 11 or 12?
11 or 12. So, and that's the pool that the council voted from.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes. Item passes. Councilmember Spears, Resolution 23-716.
Yes, I'd like to move to postpone this to March 6th. It's my understanding that we need, there may be a need to appoint an alternate in the event that Ms. Colp can't serve, and so there's some need to work on this a little bit more, and we want to allow the retirees opportunity to work on that a little bit more.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes. Item 23-716 passes. That brings us to the regular agenda. That's our, brings us to our first public hearing. I will open the first public hearing.
A public hearing for the application by Walter Bethy to rezone the property from R6, single-family residential, to R12, two-family residential for the property located at 701 North Forest Avenue. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor Members of the Council. My name is Rick Arroyo. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on January 10th of this year. Of the members present, the Planning Commission did vote four to one in favor of this rezoning. This is to rezone the northeast corner of Forest Avenue and College Terrace from the R6 to R12. The owner does wish to divide the property and build two duplexes on each lot, or one duplex on each lot. I have no new information to provide.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing.
Bill number 23-008, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R6, single-family residential, to R12, two-family residential for the property at 701 North Forest Avenue in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilmember Perkins.
Thank you. So the zoning in question is at Forest and College. It is the area abutting Forest Avenue, Forest Avenue and College Terrace. The demographics there is a mixed use of high-density, R12, and also single-family. Once you move from Truman Road up to White Oak, you have high-density, R12, and duplexes. Once you get to College Terrace there, you have, on the south, north side, you have duplexes. Moving north from College Terrace, you have single-family. Single families within the neighborhood of the Sterling Village, which have been working to improve and revitalize, remodel, and rebuild their homes there. The city had took an aggressive stance in 2006, which was to help take neighborhoods with homes that were cut up into apartments to bring them back into single-family residence. This neighborhood has been working very aggressively to revitalize itself and do that. Staff did not recommend approval for this rezoning, because it does not conform with the residential neighborhoods to the north. Therefore, I am not in favor of this rezoning at this time.
Any other discussion? Councilmember McCandless.
These are always difficult issues when we're trying to be sure that we have as much housing available for people as possible. I did take the time to go and drive around the neighborhood today and look at the houses on the north side, as well as the duplexes on the south side. This is an empty lot, so houses don't have to be taken down for this new construction. But because there are duplexes just across the street, I'm going to vote in favor of the rezoning, because I do think that providing as much new housing as possible is an important goal of the city. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilmember Spears.
If I could ask Mr. Aurora a question, or the city manager, or someone?
Absolutely. Please.
So my question really is on these two lots. Is there enough space on these lots to have the required amount of parking and things? Because there are, like Councilmember McCandless just said, there are duplexes right close there, and so I'd like to understand that a little better.
So when they're split into two lots, there would be enough frontage to have a duplex house? But understand that with any duplex, you're talking about two units, so you're talking about one driveway, one garage per unit. Obviously, if anybody has any more than that, then that's where, you know, where does that additional parking happen? But yes, there would be technically enough frontage when the lot is split for a smaller size duplex.
Is there room on, I mean, that the property abuts Forest, there's not parking on Forest there, is there?
There's limited, very limited. I'm not sure if, I have to look and see if there's no parking on Forest, but I know that there's limited parking on street in that entire intersection.
I'm recalling that there's not any right there, so, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Please, Mr. Perkins.
I would be completely remiss that I've had dialogue with the neighbors. They are talking about their concerns and their thoughts on this rezoning change. Their stance is strong that single-family would work best there. The applicant, I've listened to the Planning Commission, would not be opposed necessarily to single-family homes there. If the council would recall, in June of last year, we did a waiver for a new building permit program that would allow infill development for single-family homes in developments. So I think there's some different avenues that would work and actually blend better and much better and blend well into the community there. Then just out of, just a point of reference, is the applicant to this rezoning here this evening? So let the record show that the applicant to the rezoning is not here, but the citizens who live in this community and who will be living with this decision are here.
Councilmember Spears.
If I could ask Councilmember Perkins a question. So you're saying that the applicant's not opposed to single-family dwelling in these locations?
The, correct. So from reviewing the Planning Commission, with the one caveat, with his concern of a Zone 18, which is immediately behind those properties, which is an old antiquated zoning that has been there for decades, minus that, there seems to be no concerns for single-family homes there.
Okay.
Councilmember McCandless.
With that information, that helps me make a better decision, so I appreciate that clarification.
Any other discussion? I do have one question for Mr. Walker. Just to clarify, the city staff recommended against this.
That's correct.
Thank you. And just for me personally, my, and you'll see this as we get to the next item, too. For me personally, I like to take into account the individual council member's position when deciding on zoning changes or special use permits in their own districts, barring extraordinary circumstances. I like to trust and rely on the individual council member's knowledge and work they put in in their own districts, not to mention that the citizens that showed up tonight. So based on all that information, plus Councilmember Perkins' knowledge of his own district, I will be voting no on the rezoning. So if there's no more discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Spears.
No.
Perkins.
No.
Stewart.
No.
McCandless.
No.
Steinmeier.
No.
Hobart.
No. Item fails. We are on the second public hearing, which I will now open.
A public hearing for the application by Francisco Salido, requesting a rezoning from R12, two-family residential, and R30 PUD, High Density Residential Plan Unit Development to R6, single-family residential, for the property located at 9607 East US 24 Highway. New information only.
Thank you again. This rezoning was also considered on Planning Commission on January 10th of this year. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of this in full, kind of almost opposite of the last one. This would actually take property at 9607 US 24 Highway from an R30 PUD and an R12 down to an R6. The property owner wishes to take that lot, divide it into two lots, and there are two structures on there, and make, rehab those to two single-family homes. I have no new information to add.
Excuse me, public hearing is now closed.
Bill number 23-009, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R30, PUD, High Density Residential Plan Unit Development, and District R12, two-family residential, to District R6, single-family residential, for the property at 9607 East US 24 Highway in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes. Item passes. That brings us to the non-ordinance action items. Madam City Clerk, when you're ready.
Council actions requested authorize the City Manager to direct city staff to pursue the by-state sustainable reinvestment quarter planning project with Mark.
Any discussion? I, I would like to say, Mr. Walker, not that we need to get in the weeds on this yet, but you know how excited I am about this. It's a big piece of, of a project that I am incredibly passionate about. We are in a bit of early stages, but I'm excited to really get ramped up on, and has massive ability to really affect our tourism, some, and, and draw lots and lots of new people to our city. So, very excited to approve this item, very excited to use it to draw some folks to our city, and sure excited to see us getting some federal dollars to push this forward. So, thank you for your, you and your staff's work on this, and I'm looking forward to voting yes.
Indeed.
No other discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes. Item passes.
Bill number 23-714, a resolution adopting the 2023-2024 City of Independence Action Plan.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, who would like to go first?
Mr. Mayor Proton?
Councilmember Stewart, go ahead.
I just have, and then I would like to make to this. So, Section 5, and then the portion G. Currently, it says, "Research, evaluate, and determine the future ownership, governments, and operation of Independence Power and Light." I would actually like a motion to remove the "and determine the future ownership" and just leave everything else as it is. I, um, I don't think we need, well, first of all, I don't really have any interest in selling IPL. And secondly, to the speaker's point earlier, I mean, I think it's kind of throwing it out there that maybe if we leave this in there, is it for sale? I don't think we've, I don't think we're there yet. So, that's the motion that I'm making. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. For clarification, the amendment is to remove exactly which words?
"And determine the future ownership."
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Madam City Clerk, do you have the amendment? When you're ready, without further discussion, please call the roll.
So, oh.
Hang on a second.
So, just to make sure I'm understanding, so we're just talking about "and determine", so we would, so it would then read, "Research, evaluate governance and operation of Independence Power and Light"?
Yeah. I think what it should read is, "Research and evaluate the, research and evaluate governance and operation of Independence Power and Light." Is that how you take it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay. Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Fierce?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes. Item passes. Uh, pardon me. The amendment passes on item 5G on the action plan. Okay. The item is still pending.
Mr. Mayor Proton?
Yes, Councilmember Steinmeier?
I would like to amend.
Yes, sir.
Item, or, uh, Section 5.1C, and move it to Section 6.2, and the wording be added to A. So, not changing any of the wording, just changing the, the location, and put it under item number six, High Performance Organization, and specifically in 6.2, adding language to A.
So you're moving 5.1C?
Yes.
To 6.2A?
Yes.
Got that, Madam City Clerk? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Everyone take a look, and let me know if there's any discussion or questions. Or certainly, Mr. City Manager, as this involves your office as well, let me know if you have any comments, please.
Where's it been moved to again?
6.2A. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes. The amendment passes. The item is still pending. Is, are there any more discussion?
Just a general comment. While I, I voted no to the First Amendment, I'm in favor of the, the document, and as a whole, the, the, um, change in the amendment doesn't lessen my support of it at all, and so I'll be certainly in favor of this. That's all.
Any other comments or discussion?
Mr. Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Um, the concern was raised, this may be a lot, and, uh, to put before us, but we've, we've had discussions more internally about, um, separating out council's responsibility and purpose and the City Manager. The last thing we want to do is get into this micromanagement of the City Manager and his staff, and, and I want to make that very clear, that this, we're going to continue this discussion, but that the purposes and the, and the roadmap forward, we will make a, a more clear, as we begin to discuss this more, a more clear defined, um, role for council and staying out of City Manager's business. Is that, is that how we understood it?
I think that's a wonderful point, Councilmember. I, um, if you don't mind me commenting, I don't mean to cut you off at all. I think that's a wonderful point, and, uh, Mr. Walker, I believe you'd agree with that, wouldn't you?
Absolutely.
As, as you mentioned last week in the study session, many, many of the individual and specific action items that occurred under the big picture sort of headings that were created by council at our planning session, our strategy session, those were actually drafted or, or came from ideas from your directors and your staff.
That is correct.
So, you know, and so your, your directors know, and so your staff know, and so the good folks here know. That is not us directing your staff.
This is staff communicating back to the council and through you to the community how we plan to implement the policy visions you have laid out, based on your conversations at that strategic planning session last November.
I, um, I can understand, uh, and the point is well-made by our citizens and by our council members, the concern that that looks like that's council invading your province. I believe the message has been made clear that we have no intent to do so, but that we do appreciate the collaborative nature of this document. And something that several of the council members discussed just before this meeting started was that we very much intend to treat this document as a living document, and that we intend for it to grow and change over time as we continue to meet on a somewhat regular basis, and, uh, mark off these goals and change these goals and add new goals to it. Does that make sense?
It absolutely makes sense and is, in fact, a best practice for local government. So, very excited to collaborate, I love that term, with the council as we move forward on this.
Okay. Sure appreciate that very much. Excellent comment, Councilmember. Any other discussion? Very good.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes. Okay, looks like that brings us to ordinances.
Bill number 23-006, an ordinance authorizing final disposition of certain city records that have met all requirements to be eligible for such disposition. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes. Item passes.
Bill number 23-007, an ordinance authorizing final disposition of certain city audio and video records that have met all requirements to be eligible for such disposition. Second and final reading.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor Proton?
Yes, Councilmember Stewart.
Permission to address the City Manager?
Absolutely.
Mr. City Manager. Uh, Section 2 of this ordinance, this ordinance is approving the destruction of city audio and video records from January the 1st, 2023, to December the 31st of 2023. So I guess my question is, are we approving destruction of records that haven't even happened yet?
If, if it would be okay, I would probably refer that to the City Clerk, as that's her purview.
Okay.
So, yes and no. So there's a requirement that the council passes an ordinance, but currently, audio and video records only hold a 30-day retention. So in order to make sure we're following that requirement for ordinance passage, this allows staff to continue the practice of destroying them per state statute versus waiting for the annual destruction that happens every year, which is 23006, which would be costly with storage, and it's not extremely effective to keep them for the full year. So this allows staff to get through that process in a more effective way.
So this isn't how this is normally done, correct? I mean, this is something new?
No, this is an updated process, just so we're using best practices moving forward.
Okay, so the 30 days, that's just the minimum the state requires, correct?
Correct.
What records do this, does this include? You said audio and video. What, what is this?
So, audio and video includes primarily security camera footage from various city cameras. It also would include dash cam if it's not relevant for specific cases. But my understanding, and we could get additional clarification if we needed to, police tags specific dash cam footage that's necessary to keep for cases. So this would just be anything that didn't have a requirement to be kept.
Okay, so I understand the minimum's 30 days.
Mm-hmm.
Do we ever keep it for longer than that?
Yes.
I mean, what, can you give me an estimated time that we normally keep it for?
It really just varies on the record. Dash cam can be kept for an extended period of time, depending upon how long the case is open and being worked on.
That's not what I mean. I mean, let's say there's nothing to it. Do we always delete it after 30 days?
Yeah, my understanding is it gets deleted every 33 days.
I would actually like to see us move that farther out than the state statute, 60 or 90 days. I realize that space is a precious commodity, and it costs money. But if we're talking like security cameras inside the building or outside the building, you know, I mean, somebody slips and falls, and, you know, they contact us, you know, 45 days after it happens, and not right away. I mean, it would nice stuff, the stuff. I guess I'm not sure what the answer is, but I don't think I'm going to be voting yes on this. So, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Proton?
Please.
If I can address our City Clerk, just ask a question here.
Absolutely.
Is there a timeframe that we, we're functioning under here? Do we have to pass it tonight? Is this something that, that we can delay, maybe go into a workshop, talk about some of the issues and poor concerns? I have, I share some of the same concerns. I just want more clarity. I think it's the 30-day that, that has me.
For sure. We could definitely delay it, but it doesn't change the current process that's in place, as long as we're clear on that. So, currently, they're still being deleted at the, the 33 days.
I, I understand. And, and if we could just, um, just for the accountability and the transparency to, to citizens that might be concerned that we're just disposing of things every 30 days, maybe we can just have a little more clarity and then a, and a discussion, if it can be brought to a study session.
Definitely.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, if that's okay, Mayor Proton, if I can ask, is that something that, that we could do?
To, to have a study session on this?
It wouldn't take a lot of time.
It would not, no.
And, and so I'm not asking for a great deal of time, but we might have some questions during the discussion on it. Just, just for that transparency sake, I think it's a good idea. So, if that's possible. And if, if so, I, I would like to move that we postpone it until, until we can have a study session regarding, um, the specifics to this ordinance.
Mr. Culver, we can postpone a second reading and...
Yeah, yes, sir. No problem.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion and a second to postpone it. Do we want to request a date certain?
Could we move it to, uh, the next study session date, or is there too much on there?
Which would be March 13th.
Is that okay?
I, I know you know this, so just to be clear for everyone else, the, the clerk is the council's employee, so I would, I just, out, out of respect for the council's employees, I would defer to all of you that you're okay giving her that direction instead of me.
Sure. Okay.
Ms. Behrens, does that give you, um, sort of sufficient time to?
Yeah, of course.
Address the?
Yep.
Very good. So there's a motion to postpone this item to the, is that the March 13th study session date?
That is correct.
But then this item would come back on the?
On March 20th would be the?
The vote date for this?
The couns- that's the second council meeting in March.
In March.
So the meeting after March 13th.
Okay, so there's a request, um, to postpone this until March 20th?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Um, so there's a motion and a second to postpone this to March 20th, and a separate request, um, to have a study session which can be ordered later, or requested later. Yeah. Okay.
So do you want the study session as part of the motion, or no?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll make that a part of the motion.
Okay.
Study session on the 13th?
Yes.
Vote on the second reading on the 20th.
Got it.
Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick, Mr. City Manager, could you also maybe, your IT staff, um, see about the space and if we would extend that out more than thirty-three days?
Yes, we can check on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes, motion passes. That brings us to first readings.
Bill number twenty-three dash zero one zero, an ordinance emitting the City of Independence City Code by amending chapter seventeen, Public Works Regulations to chapter seventeen, Municipal Services Regulations, making necessary updates and clarifying the right-of-way policy. Bill number twenty-three dash zero one one, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a construction contract for the Truman Depot and Pacific Trail Project and making necessary appropriations. Bill number twenty-three dash zero one two, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, tracking number five three one six four, to provide financial assistance for the workforce contract grant program for the period of October first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, accepting funds for the period in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-seven cents, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions for the same project, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Bill number twenty-three dash zero one three, an ordinance approving rezoning from District C two, General Commercial, to District R eighteen, PUD, Moderate Density Residential Planned Unit Development, and approving a preliminary development plan to rezon the property located at four two zero, South Main Street in Independence, Missouri. Bill number twenty-three dash zero one four, an ordinance approving rezoning from District I one Industrial to District R six, Single Family Residential, for the properties located at three oh eight and three twelve, South Liberty Street in Independence, Missouri. Bill number twenty-three dash zero one five, an ordinance emitting the Unified Development Ordinance, chapter fourteen of the Independence City Code pertaining to group living facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Behrens. Okay, that brings us to, um, Councilmember comments. I'm going to go, um, in, uh, left to right today, so, Councilmember Steinmeier, if you would, sir, please, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, yeah, just a lot going on, uh, in our nation. We've got balloons, we've got spills, we have a lot that's happening, and, um, I, I just want to encourage you to not had, develop paradigm blindness where we're just not shocked by anything anymore, just, it's a time to, to watch, and it's a time to be involved, and, uh, even with our city, with the charter review, it's a time to watch, it's a time to be involved, um, and don't allow your silence, uh, to be your acceptance or your consent, especially when it comes to the issues of government. We need you to be vigilant, to watch, to ask questions, and, and to bring your concerns to us. And so, just everything that's going on, I just, I just would, um, ask that you be, let, let people know that, that it's a time for you to, to just, um, be on, on that alert, and, and get involved, and encourage your neighbors to be involved, and, and, and address us as you see fit, but, uh, that's all. I, I don't want it to be down, I don't, I don't want this to be a bummer, I just, I just want to encourage you, uh, to not become weary, and don't, and don't think that it doesn't mean anything. It does when you come and you speak to us, and I encourage you to continue to do so. So thank you for your participation tonight.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember McCandless?
Good evening. I wanted to start with a shout out to IPL. They had an employee who brought a suggestion forward that they implemented, uh, it's called the Carrying Contact Customer Application, so if you have, um, a senior member of your family or someone who could use a backup, you can fill out an application so that you could be second notification if there's an issue with someone's utilities. So I will admit, I filled out my form for my mom, just in case something happens where she doesn't pay her bill or her credit card changes and something happens, that way her water electrics stay on, uh, and I would get notified to be, uh, able to take care of that. So we always appreciate city employees who bring great suggestions forward, and that is the way city government's supposed to work, so if you would pass on our gratitude to your teammates. Uh, the second thing I wanted to talk about was a community conversation that we had around policing, uh, policing and the relationship of the police to the community and the relationship of the community to the police. Chief Desmond was there and was one of the panelists, uh, Councilmember Hobart was one of the panelists, and then we had several other community members there, and it was a really exceptional discussion, an honest and thoughtful dialogue about people who, um, encounter the police and how they do that in a way that makes them feel safe, in a way that allows the police to do their important jobs. I think those community dialogues will be ever important. We watch things happening in other communities that we do not wish to see here ever, uh, and I appreciate, uh, the police being there to hear with open hearts, uh, the concerns of the people who brought those forward, so with great appreciation, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fierce?
Just a comment, uh, to let folks know that, um, as most of you probably know, the Missouri, um, General Assembly's in, in session, and we'll be going tomorrow, a couple of us will be going tomorrow, Councilmember McCandless and I will go tomorrow to, uh, the municipal, um, Missouri Municipal League, um, Conference, and we'll get to visit hopefully with, uh, some of the representatives and senators that represent our area, uh, down there, so we're looking forward to that, um, and, um, and that's good. The other thing I would just mention, um, some of us were able to attend the Rotary Club Mardi Gras the other night, and we, um, that, um, was a, uh, successful event, uh, to, raise funds for Mothers Refuge, who is, uh, purchasing a new building, the need for, uh, services to, uh, to, to, to mothers who, um, are either unhoused or have, uh, less than desirable situations is really high in our community, and, uh, so they are actually buying a new building and will have twenty new apartments that will be, uh, available for that use, and so that's really good news for that organization, uh, they raised over a hundred thousand dollars that night for that, um, that endeavor, so, um, good, good news there and, and worthwhile endeavor, and I think that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I was there as well, and, and it was a good time, good fundraiser, and they are purchasing or have purchased the old higher ground, um, hotel, just right down here off of Maple. And to continue on with, with our, our police, so we have our police chief here, and we also have our two new deputy chiefs here, Deputy Chief Sumstead and, and Deputy Chief Patterson, so thank you, uh, and congratulations, good luck, and, um, we're here with you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Stewart?
Well, Councilmember, or Perkins just kind of stole what I was going to do, so, anyway, um, no, congratulations to both the new deputy chiefs. Um, I've actually known Michelle for almost twenty years, she was actually one of my instructors in the police academy, and she was kind of hard on me back then, but over the years I've, I've learned to respect it, so, no, congratulations to both of you, and, um, good things to come, right?
Thank you very much, Councilmember. I, um, we are all, uh, very happy to see those three smiling faces in the back of the room, um, and, uh, to piggyback on what, uh, Councilmember McCandless said, uh, Saturday, Saturday night, uh, was good for the folks that went to Rotary, uh, including Mr. Walker, who will actually serve as president of that Rotary Club next year, which is quite the honor, and, and adds, uh, quite a bit to his plate as well. And it was good for us that attended the, um, the, the talk, the program, the forum that was, uh, organized by Anthony Mondain, and Anthony Mondain, um, if you don't know him, uh, is the first elected African American, uh, that's been elected to any office in the City of Independence, ever. We are in our one hundred and ninety-sixth year as a city, and if you walk upstairs in council chambers, you will walk past a wall of pictures of white men that have been mayors, um, there are two women there, which is not very many pictures, um, and sometimes it takes these experiences, uh, for me, uh, to make me realize that, um, we need to be challenged, uh, we need to, uh, uh, as council members, uh, we need to challenge each other, and, uh, as, as community leaders, uh, we need to do better, and this is one of those times. Councilmember Steinmeier, uh, no offense, uh, to borrow your phrase, we need to do better, and this is one of those times, uh, it's time that we spend some time thinking and talking with each other and figuring out a way, uh, that we find a way and provide a space, uh, provide a safe space, provide a community for more diversity and for more equity and inclusion, because our community is increasingly diverse, but our leadership is not. So I will leave my fellow council members with that thought, and I will challenge us going forward, uh, to do so, just as I will challenge, uh, Mr. Walker, uh, to keep that same thought in mind for his staff. Mr. Walker, do you have anything for us tonight?
Thank you again for the recognition for our, our police department, as Councilmember McCandless said, getting to know your department is very important, and so you'll be seeing those faces and many others out in the, in the community, that's a major priority, we know, of the council and, and of Chief Desmond, so we're looking forward to, to getting down to business. Fresh off the region's Super Bowl win, we still have that competitive fire in our belly, so I want to let the council know that, uh, this Friday, our Independence Water will be in the international water competition, um, yeah, we're, we're going for it, baby, so we'll see what we can get out of it.
Hey, that's great!
Yeah, yeah, miraculous, really.
Thank you very much, that's it, folks, thank you. See you next week, see you next time. Meeting's adjourned.